With kids and that sort of thing.
Okay, two things to add to that. We're not putting our own department at risk by delegating this person to work at the school as opposed to...
No.
You know, we have a high...
It's a new hire.
It's a new hire, okay.
It's a... My goal is to have a new hire who's already a school resource officer certified.
Okay.
I have someone in mind, I won't bring it up right now, but I've known the individual for a long time. And I would totally recommend him for this job.
Okay. I don't believe that we need some discipline this month.
And it's zero cost to town.
Right.
Or to this town, to our budget. Comments?
Um, I guess my question would be, and I think you just answered it, if you had someone in mind, and does he feel that this is going to reduce the load on the police department, number one, his personal, or actual officer, throughout here?
Is it gonna lighten the load on the actual police department any?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Of all the work?
He gave us this, but you can't read it.
Yeah, I got that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so if you read everything in here, you don't have to make a decision right now, but they'd like to get things rolling and get a good idea within three weeks. I know that's a short time, but they're under...
Somebody want to make a motion for approval?
I know that we approve the Chief's, Lieutenant Joe Johnson's recommendation that we bring in a resource officer for the school.
Thank you.
At no cost to town or Kingston.
No cost to town or Kingston.
No cost for the police department? I mean, it's gonna come out of the school road?
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, it's the school budget.
Okay.
When we say town, we don't mean school.
Okay, well, I know that now.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I was making it too easy for you, man.
You know, I'm just like...
Has anyone told you lately you look good in polyester?
I do, I look good every day. We have someone attending remotely?
Yes, Phil is. Um, why... Last Monday when we had our meeting, we got the sheet about current trust fund balances.
Yeah.
And we had some questions.
Okay.
And among those are some of these that are super old, if we can figure out a way to close them out, how we spend the money, and I mean Kevin had a few, and I think you had one, Phil, whoever one.
It was Chuck that had a couple. On the fire apparatus.
We're just trying to make this list shorter and easier and...
Oh, I'm definitely in favor of that.
I mean, anything we can that you know of, even if we have to research how to close them out, because some of them have been in there so long, but, you know, I'm not sure everybody knows how to spend them at this point.
Well, I've done some research on that transportation improvement fund a while ago. That was what was originally, money was originally for the New Boston Road light.
That's what we call it.
And then it did get addressed, they changed it over, they canceled one out and started a new one, called the transportation improvement, but I forget exactly what the parameters were for that. They have spent money out of it one time, I think they replaced the blinking light out here, front intersection right over here, fairly recently.
So if that's roadwork or things like that, we could spend it?
Yeah.
Because Rich is gonna apply for a grant for the covert under Main Street.
Right.
And that's about what the match would be. It's my understanding, so we're down, so that would get rid of that fund pretty quick.
You can do that, you also have the, that's what the infrastructure fund is designed for also.
Okay.
For capital improvements like that.
Um, what is the legal fund?
The legal fund, I believe, is if the selectmen get unanticipated legal costs, you know, I think you have something in your budget every year. If something came up where it exceeded what you normally have in your budget, then you have this extra line item, an extra fund to tap if necessary.
Isn't that a tremendous amount of emergency money?
Considering we only budget sixty thousand?
It seems like they could be cut in half for...
Um, but there are...
What's established under...
Something, when it was established, there were parameters that you had to meet to take the money out, I believe. I'd have to research that.
Okay, so that's one research.
Okay.
And then going on to Millstream, we run the impression, like, the Lot Sae Alturas, do you got them reversed? Because Millstream was supposed to be a pretty good... We thought that was a solid trust with a lot of money, and this has shown only seven thousand, and then Lot Sae Alturas has shown a hundred and nineteen.
We don't control the trust fund for Millstream, that's a separate...
So it's not on here?
No, it's not on here at all. This is not, this is money that's here, the Millstream, listed on the Millstream is people who bought stones and perpetual care, goes in, it goes in here. And basically, the other one that was set up by an individual family is about a half a million dollars. And we can pay for everything, it pays for everything that we do at Millstream, and it returns an additional ten percent to the town over our cost each year. And it also generates, I guess it's IRS rules that say that money can't accumulate too much, so they have a certain amount they have to take out every year. So what we don't spend goes to the antivivisection league, which is about animal testing, and the MSPCA, I believe it's in, I think it's Massachusetts SPCA, I believe. The remainder of the minimum that needs to be withdrawn goes to them.
Well, is there? Well, a couple of things I have, sticking with cemeteries then. I know there was talk before to start working on some of the gravestones, you store around. And if we have that, shouldn't, should we be doing more work on gravestones, or...
Are you talking specifically in Millstream?
No, any of them, seeing, I'm looking at all these cemetery, the funds that are in there. Shouldn't we be doing a little more work in them versus just cutting the grass?
Well...
Want me to mail that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so the guy we've used in the past who does the stonework is quite elderly, and not answering his phone anymore, so what I was trying to locate was a way, and because we're anticipating the transition, potentially is getting someone trained on how to do the stone repair, so we have them in-house. The other side of that is since now that the plains, that's where the majority of our stone repairs would be, is in the plains, most of the greenwood and pine grove are in pretty good shape because they're newer cemeteries. Plains is the one that would kind of need the most work. And since that's on the National Historic Registry, there are certain standards, or I was told there are certain standards that would have to be followed for the preservation. So we're still kind of researching that to make sure that we're doing that in accordance with that, and finding someone who actually is trained in those standards isn't very easy.
All right, well, I was just wondering, because I know it's been a while since I seen, we used to have a line item for gravestone repair, and I haven't seen any, and I was just wondering if we're not doing them, or we're...
No, I do minor repairs, like when there's vandalism or anything like that, I'll typically fix the stones myself. So it's just rolled into the hourly wage for the section.
Yeah.
To do that kind of stuff. What the ideal scenario would be is to get an inventory in with the plains stones to see what we're dealing with and what types we need to get done, and then developing a contract for someone to come in and do, like, a phased restoration of the different types of stones. Because the problem is out there, you have, you know, ones that families paid to have money in back in the day, and then there's ones that are just pieces of soapstone they carved names into and stuck in the ground. And it's completely different preservation techniques for each one. So it really needs a professional, but it needs, you know, just like any other contract that the town puts out the bid, we have to have specific, you know, a listing of everything we need, you know, what specifically we want done. And unfortunately, busy was last year, we weren't able to get that, you know, where it needed to be.
So Phil, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea if you would join a heritage meeting sometime in the near future?
Yeah, Ernie and I have talked about it, and yeah, totally agree.
Good.
Um, let me ask you, Brad, where are you at right now with hiring someone to cut the grass this year?
We're all set, we have a signed contract with the same guy that did it last year.
Okay, and we're not gonna have any, he's gonna get it all done from Memorial Day, the first cut of cleanup?
I hope so.
After last year's?
I hope so.
Well, you better be working now because it's around the corner.
Yeah, it's due.
Well, I know, but I'm just asking, because last year people were...
Those three weeks come by fast.
I know, actually, I think, I think last year we were all right, I think it was the year before, that he didn't get to one of the cemeteries.
There was one cemetery he wasn't able to get to last year, he had an equipment breakdown, and part of it was on us because we did not get the contract to him until a week prior to Memorial Day.
Yeah.
So he actually jumped through quite a few hoops to get the cemeteries where we were having ceremonies taken done, but we don't do anything in Pine Grove, and that was the one that he was not able to get completed. It was done, I believe, three days after Memorial Day, but that will not take place this year. Him and I have already discussed it.
All right, well, we've got four weeks from today, so...
Yeah.
And I mean, do we want to talk about, I mean, at least Brad's here now, we did talk about possibly rewriting the job description.
He is aware of that, Phil's talked to him, I've talked to him, so that's something that we'll deal with in the future.
Yeah. Come on, Eddie.
What are, what else on the trust funds?
Um, that was...
Phil, did you have something on there?
Uh, no, the Millstream one, I guess I wasn't really clear on exactly how that was dispersed, so that answered that one for me, I probably should have known that. And then the other, the other one, L E S, I'm not so...
In the fire department, I think the fire buildings, it showed one twenty-seven, but Cindy said that's being drawn down right now.
Yeah, they're spinning that.
Yeah.
Fire building shows twelve thousand nine hundred...
Well, we got a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Well, there's two items there, Kevin.
Why am I...
Right about the hundred and twenty-seven is the twelve nine thirteen, fire apparatus.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, that's accurate, you know what, I wasn't looking, I'm sorry, my eyes are cross-eyed. The one twenty-seven is high rate, definitely.
You know what I find helps, Kevin, is you get like a straight answer, you...
Especially as you get older, Fred.
It helps.
It helps, it does. And the school tells you what to draw out of the scholarship funds, is that correct?
Um, we actually tell them how much money is available.
Okay.
And then they award the scholarships after we tell them the amounts that we have available in the scholarships.
Okay.
And it's, thank God, the interest rates are starting to move up a little bit now, so they can generate more income.
That's good, there's a benefit.
Are there any on there that you want to comment about that we haven't hit on?
I just, I had noticed, do, 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 what was it? Oh, Magnuson, what do they call it, Magnuson Daily? Magnuson Plains, I believe it was, well, there's one of them, there's several, start with Magnuson, I forget which one it was, but it didn't require interest only, so we could actually spend that one down, it was, I believe it was for mowing the plains and stuff like that. And historically, we've just taken the interest generated by the town, turned it over to the town to offset the cost of keeping up with the plains, but I had seen the language in the agreement of the, it was like left in of someone's will. And it said, you know, that you're free to spend the principal also. So it's wonderful if we wanted to.
So you want to just check the guidelines on that one and make sure...
Yeah, wait, let me, let me do the research and find out which, which fund that was exactly. Pretty sure it was Magnuson Plains, I think it was. And I don't know if you realize, the cemetery trust that was set up, like, individual purchases before, I believe it was nineteen eighty-eight, they made a change, anything that was established before that needs to be maintained, we have to separately, as an individual trust. All the capital reserve, I mean, not capital reserve, the maintenance, like, the money that's set aside for maintenance of the cemetery is considered a trust. So there's like, something like four hundred of them, that has to be, the accounting has to be maintained individually. And we're not supposed to pool the money for the general care of the cemetery. It's supposed to be like the a dollar seventy-three or something that was generated for that one particular plot, it's supposed to be used on that plot, according to the state, believe it or not.
So we should get a hold of one of our illustrious representatives to help us consolidate some of this stuff?
Um...
What should we do? Or we can't do anything?
I'm not sure exactly, we did, they did a thing, I think it was like eighty-eight, where any, any sales from that point on can be pooled. So we no longer, the new, the new ones, we no longer have to keep a separate accounting of, but the old ones, it's just, you know, they put, they put aside two hundred dollars a hundred years ago, and we have to show two hundred dollars of what was generated by interest and what was spent of that interest, you know, and it's an accounting nightmare.
I would say so.
Yes.
Well, why don't you write up some kind of recommendation on that too, and maybe we run it by summer and see if there's any way to change it?
If we could do all of those, you know, all of the individual trusts, if we could pull them all in with the other ones, it'd be great, I'm not sure what the legal process would be, or if they have established a legal process.
And we think, that may be something that, once we talk to someone, we might be able to go to court, not to file lawsuits, but to see if we can legally make that consolidation. See if other towns...
I remember when I went through the training, they, they talked about that, but I, I don't think that, at that, I haven't, I haven't been to one of the training sessions in, I don't know, maybe five years, I don't, at that point, I don't believe there was a, we could get, you know, get out of it, but they may have passed something since then that I'm not aware of. Wouldn't hurt to ask, that's for sure.
Should we go by someone, you know, approach him first and then see what we could, I mean, there's not even spreadsheets that you could use to accurately figure this out, right?
Um, well, we have Three Barrens is one of our investment advisors, and part of the, our agreement with them is they prepare the returns that go to the state, and so they, they take care of it all, but, and then we have a bookkeeper that works in coordination with them to get this done, but it's very time consuming and, you know, to me, it shouldn't be necessary.
Let's keep a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, Brad, I'd like to meet up with you on that, you and I can sit down and kind of go through it, and maybe come up with some solutions on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's it?
I think that's it.
Well, that was easy.
Two or three answers, and then we'll decide how to deal with those.
It's a lot of money.
Yes, well, we're spending some of it down for the new fire station.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Yep.
Thank you for all your help with this, believe me.
Always a pleasure.
Huh?
Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Likewise.
So it's, oh, it's Chuck and Phil, I was, I was trying to figure out when I was coming here, I was like, who am I gonna be seeing, anyway?
Chuck's in Arizona and Phil's on the computer.
So I wasn't sure who left, and so Don, Don is out.
Don was out, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
He's gonna be bored, huh?
No, he's driving, he's driving a bus for Riverwood.
He's gonna be bored.
No, I guess he loves it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Phil, I'm passing this to you. Yeah.
Well, we're just here because last meeting, in your minutes, there were some questions regarding the Acorn Forest logging and forest fund. So we're here to clarify any questions you have, and Shaw is here to clarify the amount that's in the forest fund. We might want to start there.
Sure. So, is that clear? Yeah.
You gotta talk really loud so we can hear you.
Sure.
Well, it said here in your last minutes that Selectwoman Alessio asked how much money is in the forest fund, and a selectman claimed that it was twenty-eight thousand, so...
Right. So Phil, we're throwing you under the bus. The amount is actually seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and that represents two timber sales that were deposited separately for approximately twelve thousand into the account, so now that...
Recently.
Recently, this, this year. So that's a new amount. And so originally, we had five thousand dollars up until then. The big thing around the forest fund, I think that we wanted to just clarify is that, when we were talking with Phil at our last meeting about, was that the forest fund is, you know, is one of two funds that the conservation has, we have the conservation fund and the forest fund. The forest fund can only be used for the town forests, so all that money can only be put back, according to the RSAs, into the town forests. And, and we recently learned, that was two years ago, that to use the forest fund Monday, we actually have to put a warrant article in each year to require, even though we have the funds, we have to tell the public what we want to do, use the funds for. And mostly, that would be around developing the forest management plans, any infestations, any, you know, trails that we may want to do, or public education. But that were some of the pieces that we wanted to clarify.
There's also surveys, wildlife action plan, conservation around rare plants and animals, and surveys, and we need them, so it's anything major that has to do with town forests, that isn't conservation land, that's land that's designated as town forests, and we have seven of them.
What is the difference in the conservation fund that's listed on our trust that says there's fifty thousand dollars and this, Sanders, forty-five, I mean, are they the same fund?
You were talking about the trust that Brad was just talking about. I'm not sure, we don't actually do anything with that, but I do think that it is related to us. It could be for a purchase, if you chose to purchase land through that.
Oh, that's the, with the separate land, yeah, that's...
It's a separate land, all right, I'll find out what it's for.
Yeah, we don't...
So that's not what this sheet's...
No, we don't manage that.
Right.
That, that has to go for a warrant article to be used, I believe, yeah.
Um, so there was some question around the use of who manages the timber sales and all that, right? And so, just to clarify, we had Ron Klemarsik, who is a forester, he developed the forest management plan that was submitted to the board for Acorn and all the town forests. And then he helped find the logger, we got three bids for that, and he managed the oversight of the logger. When we had some issues, then Rich St. Elair went out and looked at it as well, so then Evy was working with both of them to make sure the recent harvest, for example, was working.
Historically, except for Valley Lane, which was done, that was the first one, but all the other six forests, Ron has done a forest management plan, starting with Dave Ingalls, and he worked closely with Dave Ingalls for years. Dave Ingalls just sort of took care of the forest herbivores, and I was on conservation for part of his tenure. We didn't even know that the forest harvests were going on, and he would, he would just, he was the forest manager for the Conservation Commission, and he knew about Woodlot, so he just went ahead and did all that. Now that we don't have Dave Ingalls, so I have to go through Ron, and we work through it step by step. We go through, and he's, he's an excellent forester, he works with every major conservation concern in New Hampshire, so, especially in Concord. So he's very recognized, and you guys have met him and talked to him, so... Anyway, so that was, we just wanted to clarify those things, and find out if you had any other questions. There's some comment here about how involved you should be with that. I think you were involved with it, because you read the management plans, or at least they were given to you. You had plenty of opportunity, I think you did talk to him, I'm trying to think if he came before the select board.
I thought he had, but it was like two years ago.
Yeah, it was a while back, so I'm not sure. But, you know, but we're happy to have, if we do another cut in the future, we're happy to have him come and talk with you. Any other input from you about, we're done with this now, pretty much. We have, our trails committee is gonna put a gate in there, we have, so we have to place some seed in there so that it regrows around the trail end, we have to do a kiosk. Kiosk is another major expense for trailheads, that really, we're talking about maybe, Phil suggested that we come up with a warrant article that allows us to, I'm not exactly sure how it would be worded, but that allows us to use that money during the year, a certain amount of that money. So we can talk about that as it gets closer to time, to figure out how we can use the money if a need arises, because it's locked up unless the town votes on it on March, so that's difficult.
Don't, don't wait until the fall, kind of develop a plan of what you'd like to see done this summer, when there's still the time to do it leisurely, as opposed to...
Yeah.
Deadlines and hearings and so forth, and because we have, if we have some funds that we could use to make things better, as far as bearing, then we should take the initiative.
We need two kiosks now, we have some invasive plants in one area that we have to remove somewhere. But that's tied up for this year, we can't do it, so we have to, unless we can have a bake sale or something, so... In any case, we just wanted to clarify that amount and any other questions you might have about management.
I was just, when do you anticipate the next forestry happening, foresting?
Uh, when do you anticipate the next forestry happening?
Um, we just got an email from the county forester, asking us about two properties, Back Road and Fry, and asking us, he's the president of the New Hampshire Tree Farm Association, and all of our forests are also considered New Hampshire tree farms because they're under management. And he wanted to know what has been done with management plans on those two forests, which we haven't done in harvest since I've been on commission. And so I looked at the management plans, they're both vaguely due, they could be done, there was a time span of like ten to fifteen years, or ten to twenty years, another harvest, selective cut should be done. So that email went to Ron as well, and he said he had done two cuts on Back Road in two thousand eight, and he didn't... two thousand eight, and he didn't say one way or another. I think he said he would be willing to look at it again. Frye is a major problem with access, and to be able to get logging trucks in there, we either have to go through a property in Danville, and the owner has not responded to numerous contacts from us, or we have to improve Fry Road, the class six portion of Fry Road that goes from Danville, it's actually in Danville, and goes right to the Kingston line. If we go from Kingston, it's miles. And it outweighs the expense of improving that road enough for logging trucks to use it, outweighs the benefit that we get from a harvest. So we're trying to, we keep thinking about that. For now, we've sort of tabled Frye Timber Forest as a natural area and sort of left it. And so we're, you know, that's a perennial question. But right now, nothing is imminent. We don't have anything on the table for another harvest.
Good. Two things for you. We now have a compliance sheet for code enforcement that you can pick up downstairs through the week. And what it asks for is if you ask something to be enforced, to put the support behind it, the documentation of what we're enforcing, not just because you say, "Go do it," but to show us why we need to do it.
You mean like an incursion?
Well, like the RSA or state law or whatever that says why the people are doing something wrong? Some kind of proof, so when we go out, we can show them-
Gotcha.
This. And the other thing is to remind you on minutes, that you need all your, like, trail committee and everything are supposed to have minutes.
Yep.
Okay.
We have minutes for all of our committees-
And you're turning it in? Turning everything into tamming?
Pardon?
And you're turning everything into tamming?
To my knowledge, we are completely agree on the two committees and us.
Okay.
I've been bugging the chairpeople and the secretaries, and I think we're all good.
We're just trying to get everybody online as we're starting to scan and everything, so everything's called.
I think we should be a hundred percent in.
Okay, good.
So Rich, is with the compliance sheet, so if we have, because we often have violations of different things that we would want to report, so that would be the formal way to do that? We discussed it in our meeting, we would complete the sheet-
Right.
And submit it to, I don't know if that's you or-
It's a three copy sheet. How it's supposed to work, you keep one copy when you give it to us. We correct the issue, put what we did to correct it, and give that sheet back to you.
Well, actually, do you have a code enforcement officer now?
Do what?
Do we have a code enforcement officer, or is that still you?
No, we've had somebody for two months, something like that.
Okay.
He's on board.
Good. We've got one major issue right now. We have photographic evidence, and it's mostly the easement document that they're in violation of, not usually the RSA, although they tie in a little bit, so.
You can fill it. Don't take a stack full of sheets, take five, because they'll get destroyed before you use them.
Yeah.
You can always get more, just put the backup support, pictures, RSAs, whatever it takes that we need to enforce it.
Well, Greg and I have an appointment with Acting Chief Johnson, but he was a bit too busy up till Wednesday, so hopefully we'll see him after Wednesday about the incursion that's happening, so.
Okay.
On top of it.
What do you ever came of last fall, we went walking out over to the country pond and over on, not, Green Road, we're looking to possibly do a beach lodge for kayaks on the pond?
Yes.
What ever came of that?
No, no, they're working on it. That's a priority project for this summer. What's taken the early priority is that Southeast Land Trust chose our South Kingston Town Forest as the forest to do in New Hampshire for National Trail Day. So all their focus has been on repairing bridges and signage and so forth. Greg just got back from the ski slopes, so they're working really very hard on that. And as soon as that's done and that's over with, and that's June third, we'll attack that boat launch, but it's happening.
Okay.
Yep.
I would highly recommend that you come in here every two or three months and catch us up on any projects, just so the public knows.
Yep.
Heritage Committee just did a great big sheet of what they've achieved in the last few years. It's downstairs, it brings a lot of attention to the committee.
Yep.
So.
We can come every two weeks if you want, so.
I was careful to say every three or four months.
Sorry, my bad, my bad.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for our day.
Thank you.
Reed Merritt, I'm not even gonna try the last name. Van Vulun.
Van Vulun, yeah, it's Dutch.
Well, I can tell, it's probably Dutch.
Mr. Camp Lincoln, I've seen you a while.
Yeah, it's been a while. Good business.
Nice to see you.
You too, Litch. How are you?
We're down there in the woods.
What's that?
We're doing a walk down there in the woods.
We are, yep. Registration's good. We need a few more staff, so we're looking for a summer job.
I'll ask them.
I just want to remind you to speak loudly so the people at home can hear you, and we can hear you world. About half a day, so. You can state your name, everything.
Cool. Yeah, my name's Reed Van Vulun, I'm the camp director over at YMCA Camp Lincoln, and I'm on the Kingston Lake Association as well.
Muriel Langlos, president of the Kingston Lake Association.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Meyer, I'm the CEO of the Southern District YMCA Camp Lincoln.
And I'm Forrest Bell, I'm the owner of FB Environmental Associates, and I work on lake protection projects all throughout New Hampshire. I work out of Dilver, New Hampshire.
Okay, cool. So hopefully you guys got the resources I dropped off, but we have an opportunity as the town of Kingston for some grant money to help improve our lake and water quality. So essentially, it's a grant opportunity through Department of Environmental Services around, you know, clean water. So essentially, what we're trying to do with the town, you know, the money goes through the town, but essentially, our lake is impaired a little bit, so some of the quality of our water, the trees aren't getting better, they're getting worse. So essentially, we're trying to get some money to provide a watershed plan, essentially. So with that plan comes action steps on how to improve our watershed. So essentially, what's happening is we're getting a lot of erosion and soil runoff into our water, and Forrest can talk more about the details and the science behind it. But this is an opportunity that, you know, as a town, that we could get money to then turn into a grant to help improve the water quality in our lake. So I don't know if you were able to see the kind of back page of the document, look through, where it says Great Pond to see around the assessment cycle, around aquatic life, swimming, boating, and fish consumption. But you can see that in different areas on Great Pond, we have some poor and severe, you know, quality around there on our watershed assessment, and this is from the state.
So just to tack on to that, so yeah, so Kingston Lake, Great Pond, as it's officially known, it is an impaired water body in New Hampshire. It's mostly impaired by nutrients, phosphorus, and it's, the official state impairment is aquatic life, so essentially the fish in the lake are going to have trouble surviving over time because the oxygen levels, especially in the lower part of the lake, have really declined over time. This is happening in other lakes, it's not just your lake, but in order to get future grants in the state of New Hampshire from the state to fix the problems, you have to have one of these watershed plans approved by the state. So that's what this grant is for. It's actually a loan, but it's a hundred percent principal forgiveness. So there's a, you know, a technicality there that's obviously an important one, and this is how the state of New Hampshire has been funding these projects around the state.
So the loan is the money, and if we do it right, we get it forgiven. Is that basically the bond line?
It's forgiven, and there's a, you know, a small amount of interest. You know, we just worked on one up in Hart's location, and, you know, it ended up being fifteen hundred dollars over the course of two years, and some other people paid that amount. And I think in this case, the Lake Association and the YMCA would cover that interest amount.
So in the document would show that it's forgiven and associated with the-
Correct. Yeah, and I, we would have to go to a warrant article in March, and the first application is due on June first, is the pre-application, so the town doesn't have an obligation at any point, you know, to follow through, but that's the first step to get scored against other projects in the state. And then you get invited to submit a full application, and then it would go as a warrant article before your town, and if that passed, then the project would start next summer. It's a slow process.
That's right, but if slow is, oh, it's not bad. If everybody's on board, it works out pretty good. So what we need to do is have the watershed plan developed, and get it approved, then we get it funded, then we implement it, and then upgrade the level of the quality of the water at the lake.
That's right.
Sounds like an open range.
That's why I asked, is there a reason why a town wouldn't do this? I mean, it's free money to do this.
And we've been working on this. We have the data. We've been water sampling since nineteen ninety-nine. Kingston had a citizens advisory group, which my husband was a part of, and that came under the Kingston Conservation Commission. And then when Kingston Lake Association was formed in two thousand and six, then we picked up the sampling. It comes under the Conservation Commission, but Lake Association members actually go out and do the sampling. And for years, we did five months worth, and then over time, it got cut back to three months because of various things, like just recently, COVID impacted that. But we have, you've all seen, I think, the Great Pond Diagnostic Study Book, it's about this thick, so we have plenty of material to guide this watershed management plan. And I have to tell you, I feel very excited about this, because the Lake Association has been trying to get involved in something like this for years, and we just haven't had the resources, people-wise or financially. But we've been putting money aside since we were formed for such a project, so we can, along with Camp Lincoln, pick up any of the periphery that falls aside from that. So this is just such a wonderful opportunity, and our members are ready, and we know that in March, it will take an education plan to help our citizens understand what we're about, but we're ready for that challenge. Believe me, we are ready.
You said you test three months. Is it weekly, yearly?
No, it's monthly.
Alright, so do we test it?
Once a month.
Okay.
We're increasing it this year.
Yes, May through September.
Is it always the same location, it's switched locations?
Well, it's always two locations on the lake, the north and south side, and then all the inlet, all the inlets and the outlet. So Fair Road, Brick-on-Park Road, Ball Road, and the dam. I think I've covered them all. But we test the outlets, that outlet and the inlets.
So when you do this study, is there a way to tell what impact septic systems have on the lake?
Yeah, that's a really good question. There is, it's not precise, right? A lot of what's happening in septic systems is happening underground, and you can't, you know, you can put a dye test in or something, but it's hard to tell what the impact is. So you really look at, like, risk factors, like what are the age of the systems? If it's pre-nineteen seventy, your chances of problems are much, much higher. What type of soils, is there a lot of ledge and bedrock and things like that?
I understand how to analyze septic, but does the lake water analyze how much of the septic's getting into the lake water?
Not directly. I mean, the high phosphorus and high bacteria are indicators, and you can also do conductivity tests, but again, it's like, septic systems are likely. But then you do modeling as part of the watershed plan, and you often, you come out with a number, what percent of the impact is septic. And, you know, we just worked on one where it's about fifteen percent. So fifteen percent of all the contributions to a lake over in Chesterfield was septic systems.
And so your company is willing to write this watershed for the grant and prepare it?
Yeah, we've done quite a few. We've done a couple dozen in New Hampshire, and so we have a lot of experience doing that. And it's a stakeholder-driven process, so it's not just a consultant comes in, but it's everyone works together for about a year on the project, and because, you know, the solution is going to happen locally. So that's what the plan will say.
Phil? Questions? Good.
Are you looking for endorsement from us? What do you want us to do?
Well, yeah, essentially, the money comes through the town, so we need you guys to be on board for us to do the pre-application in the nineties.
So what do you need for a motion? Muriel, you always told me you were going to keep doing it till we got it right, so.
Do you want me to make motion, Ellie? I can do that.
Tell me what I'm supposed to say. Muriel and I served the school board together many years ago.
Yeah.
Teasing her about one of her most famous comics.
Yeah, so the grant, the loan has to go through a municipality, that's the only option. So I think we need the town to accept submitting a pre-application, and then whoever's name, I suppose, the-
Chairman.
Mr. Wilson, who would it be?
Chairman of the board.
Okay, yeah, chairman of the board, would be just the name attached to that.
Okay, so I believe that we endorse the proposal to develop a watershed manager plan for Kingston Lake.
Second. Discussion? All those favors say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Vote, vote she carries.
Thank you so much.
If you want to research or bring this public to us.
Sounds good.
Very exciting. Be very good. Oh, there's so much COVID relief money, like ARPA money, but as Forrest was saying, in order to tap into any of the money to do anything, you need to have a watershed plan. That's like the key. And we want, you know, we love Camp Lincoln, we love the lake, we love Kingston, we want to make sure that the lake stays healthy.
Does it tie into the MS four at all? Because it should help us with that, but it should-
It should score points on the MS four sheet.
Yeah. Yeah, extra points, because there's a whole outreach component, and that's a big part of MS four.
Yeah. I mean, I kind of describe MS four as a kind of a graph, that we start out at zero, and everything we do, we move up the charts, so that would move us up the chart.
Way up.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you do a whole assessment of the culverts and the infrastructure, that's all part of the plan in that watershed.
Alright.
And we just recently-
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We just recently got that letter from Rich St. Hilaire, too, about the, so this fits all, the timing for all of this couldn't be better. It's just perfect.
That's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm taking advantage of this opportunity to share our latest newsletter.
You're getting credit, but that's true.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Hi, Francis, public comment number one.
Wow, seven thirty.
Committee reports?
I got a few things.
Okay.
The SOA Committee has asked that we join, we as a town, join the Clean Energy New Hampshire. We had the form I sent out last week. Is everybody helping us with some of our analysis of the RFQs that have gone out? So it makes sense to support the organization that's going to be helping us anyways, and I think this would give them an impetus to even work harder. Not that they probably need much impetus, they seem to be a pretty good organization. I believe it's two hundred and fifty dollars is the annual dues, and I would, I would, I move that we expend two hundred and fifty dollars to join the Clean Energy New Hampshire.
Second. Have a motion, any comments, discussion? All those fairies aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two, Kingston Days. We met last week, and one of the issues for them is that the Hampstead Kingston Lions Club will not be doing the food at the breakfast and lunches that they have been doing. So the Kingston Days committee is going to send a letter to to Kingston Restaurants to see if they would wish to participate. They generate, I believe, about $3,500 to the vendor. And they gave Kingston Days 10% of that revenue. So it's not a lot of revenue to us, but it's a lot of convenience for the.
Benson's.
Excuse me?
Benson's.
Benson's would be, I mean, we're going to send it to every restaurant. Benson's, Couch Town Ricks, the new guys.
He's busy in a week.
It's not our decision to make. I think the Kingston Days committee is just going to, I'm just letting you know.
So this is in place of the committee kitchen, is that what?
Yeah, the committee kitchen worked into the Lions Club.
Okay.
Okay, so now there's no one to provide that breakfast lunch. There's still going to be vendors, but in case some of them locally wants it. So we're going to send out a letter to the Kingston Restaurants to see if they're interested in taking on this project. Just let, just to kind of keep you on the loop on that. And the Employee Benefits Group did meet again last week, and things are moving right along on that. We're tackling earned time, sick time, tuition reimbursement, bereavement leave, longevity clause, sick bank. So we've got quite a few things covered. And yeah, our next meeting is on May 10th, so that's going along pretty good.
Next time, we have to bring that AED facendee. Bring an automatic external defibrillator facendee.
What time is that meeting?
That's at 9 o'clock on May 10th at the Highway Department. But we'll be making, you know, as we progress, we'll be making recommendations through the board to tell you what we would like to see happen. Because we've talked about the fact that it's not always a salary rate that keeps people here. It's also a decent benefit package. And we have some things that need to be spiffed off a little bit. That's it for me for now.
Liaison reports, I spoke with Block Five. The library's still having issues with their phones over there. So Block Five is going to be doing, first priority is the Fight Department. They're moving in between the 9th and the 16th. They sure as, they'll have phone systems. They said he could do a second project, it would be the library. No timeframe on it, just but as soon as he can get the thing. He did explain to me that he's, he's having a hard time getting some of the stuff too. But he was planning on putting in an upgraded phone system, not the one that he originally spect on. He says it's going to cost him a little bit more, but he said it'll work out in the long run for him. So but we may be getting those phones that he actually showed us. We may not be getting those specific phones. But he shows us it'll be a even better system. And then as far as audio equipment for here, I have one proposal. The second one, the company out of Hampton, sent it to me, and she made a mistake on, she thought I only wanted two, two microphones, lapel mics. I wanted two lapel mics, but desk mic, so she's redoing that. I haven't heard from the AV guy from the high school. He was out of Boston, I called him, and he said, he was straight out, he said, yeah, I'm going to get that to you. He hasn't gotten it to me yet, but hopefully he'll get that to me this week. And I will call that guy from Salem, give him one last shot to at least get in a bid. So I'm hoping by next Monday, I'll have at least three bids before this board to take a look at.
We should also look at that our program and system that for recording minutes of meetings. And that's where they have that little recorder, you have software on your computer. We got to do something, we got to do something soon.
Yeah.
All these guys coming around, at this point, I'm not, I'm ready to get a box with microphones. Put one in front of us and call it a day.
Sing karaoke?
You don't want me to sing anything, trust me on that one.
But anyways, if I will say, they're all saying the same thing. I mean, I want the proposals so we can move forward to at least four, because depending on what it is, we're not, we're not getting anything next week. Because it's going to take time to get the stuff in, because there's chips in the microphones. But.
Yeah, but we don't even, we're not even getting any proposals in.
Yeah, I know.
So it's not, you can't blame the lack of equipment, because we haven't even got an idea of what you.
I got you, so the music, though, that guy, he was on top. I have his, but I'm waiting for the others, so.
Well, if the others don't come in by Friday, tell them to go pounce in.
That's all I have.
I cleaned that up.
All right. I have two things, the staying glass committee met mainly to start for contributions. We're going to start hitting some families in town, some businesses in town, trying to get them to purchase the restoration of one window first. And then we're going to go down and seek alternate bids. But we're going to try to go after some big hitters and get fewer donors and more money.
So what's the cost of a window?
Well, that's a variation, which I can show you.
Okay. Doesn't mean a thing.
I have a list of people. The other one is the Heritage Commission met. And one thing that Ernie put together, and it's downstairs on the Golden Port, is a chart of everything they've achieved since they've started. And it's pretty elaborate. I mean, it was impressive to go through. And it brings public awareness to what they're actually doing. And they've got quite a bit that they need to do with the cemetery and stuff. And that's why I said Phil should probably attend one of those meetings, because they want to do some markers and some different things now. I'm doing planning board tomorrow night, because Chuck will still be out of town. That's it for liaison. Oh, business?
I got some stuff.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Just first thing was the SOLO Police and Recyclers Committee. We were previously members of the Northeast Resource Recovery Association. And somewhere along the way, we stopped being members. It's going to be $451, and that's based on population. Ernie's corporate, Rich Stainlehr, and we have the money to budget. So obviously, you know, we have, plus there's any objection regarding that. Kind of all they have then is they help coordinate. If we, you know, yes, it just basically helps us figure out what to do with the climate materials, going pricing. And then they have a lot of resources, a lot of times, figure out what to do with the issues that we're dealing with from that committee. So you shouldn't see that, sir. We met last Wednesday, and the kind of the, the big thing we came up with is the tower to gas established oil drop off, like a waste oil drop off at the highway car. We're looking at potentially adding a couple of things to that, but not anything major. The big thing was looking at, and still got to meet up with John's Truck and Auto, who's potentially having that drop there. It's there for that day, so it's a man's area, and they drop off oil goods, metal, and things. We go up there and then potentially cardboard it later days. We're just doing it incrementally with things that we already are doing. And that's no cost to the town, so we'll be outside there picking up those things. And all our, our attempts to just lower the amount of trash going in the waste stream more than anything else. Pricing, we're going to be pricing, still waiting on the contract extension options. But we're going to make, coming to conclusions, maybe we can choose to just lower the overall amount of things going into the trash. And it's like, wherever possible, if it's something the town doesn't have to pay for, that's what we want to do. I I had a hard time here at E D, but I I just wanted to say that's the wrap for the Consecration Commission. I think moving forward, we're just going to have to iron up the process on how these, I think it's been, as she alluded to, Daniel can't allow it. And they've, you know, done it the way I got, I just, just don't put on a line. And I don't want anyone to admit anything wrong on anything. I think that's a good start, is people are able to, you know, understand what the town's going to use for and how they're, and that's one of the things I'm researching right now. Is how we can streamline that process so that they can wire us, because we certainly got them to operate more and manage the land. Fire Station Building Committee was canceled last week, and it's probably not a part of our schedule. Maybe this weekend, and expect it to be canceled, so that's all I got.
Okay. You got a decision about biweekly payroll, when to implement it? Does anyone have a buddy have a problem with doing it?
I think it's a terrific idea, to be honest with you.
Yeah, they, we talked about it a little bit, Cindy was asking for it. It is not just a money saver, it's a time saver, it's a few different things. I know some employees are going to be resistant to it. But it's the way everyone's going. And I think if we started for January 1st, it gives plenty of notice, that gives them a.
Do we want to wait that long? I guess that's the question. I understand people need a time to transition, I I get that, I do really get that.
Want to start the last quarter?
Yeah.
That way, we're not doing everything at once to implementing the new procedures and.
Yeah, because we, right, I think that makes a lot of sense.
You okay with that, Phil?
I guess I would play devil's advocate on that, because I think if we give you everything at once, it would give us a lot of time to do. Put the education out there for employees, that's what we have, like a sit down meeting, where people can ask questions on anything upcoming changes. And if you tie that to the pay test, you know, be a change, and people will be aware, you know, it's something that I pay attention to. A lot more like, oh, this, I'm not going to start this, I'm not going to buy it. But I'm not, work fast either way, I guess I would just put that out there.
Can I suggest that we send out a memo to the department heads and say, talk to your folks, you know, how much time do you think we really need? I I'm not in a position to know whether fourth quarter's better or second quarter, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's why I'm saying, I think Phil brings up a good point. If you're going to change the other stuff, it's all we're doing better. So this is one that they might, some might not like it. So is it, it's not going to save us that much to switch it on the fourth quarter, why not just do it all at once?
I'm just saying, change is hard.
I know.
It's very hard. And if we're going to throw a lot at it, I, I'll go along with whatever you gentlemen want. I mean, I I don't, I don't feel really strongly.
Why don't we send out something to department heads and see if we can eat feedback? We may not get any. I mean, if we only have one or two employees out of the whole town, that's not bad.
Correct, in which case we can implement every other week sooner rather than later. That, I think that's one of the biggest nuts will be, because budgeting accordingly, and they need a little bit, employees definitely need some lead time, you can't say.
I agree. See, so what do you, what do you tell them? So so two employees say, I don't want it, and they they go.
They don't have a choice.
No, I get it. So then we're going to implement it anyway. We're going to say, well, two employees don't care, so we'll start another fourth quarter. Why not just do it January, you know, I don't know, I think it's, make it all at once.
I don't get it.
If you do it with the bad, like, if there's no resistance to it, nobody really has a big problem with it.
Let's do it, right?
It's beneficial for us to switch to it, so it's like, it wasn't about the seed, you get the benefit, it makes everything easier.
And don't forget, Cindy's going to have more to do implementing the new benefit program. Just in her time alone, just educating employees on that issue alone.
Well, one thing that we ought to think about is if we're going to do an appreciation day again this year.
Which I hope we do.
Which I hope we do, is that we do it earlier than we did last year, but late as we can, so we can maybe go over all this stuff that day. Give people kind of a heads up on what we're working on, what we're doing.
Well, just remember, the employee appreciation is also all of all tears too.
Right, I know, but we can separate it a little bit.
So send it out to department heads, let them know it's coming, do we want to do the motion now, or just wait till we have a date for the implementation?
Why don't we wait till next Monday and see what we get from the feedback? And we'll send it out tomorrow and ask them to give us feedback on Friday, or by Monday at noon or something, so we don't.
So Susan's going to send that out versus us talking.
I'm going to use an email.
Do I have to send it out to department heads?
Yeah.
DPW Director Jobs?
I thought, I thought the revision was pretty good.
Everybody all right with revisions, Phil?
I got to take a couple more hands off.
You okay with it? You okay with revisions?
Uh, yeah, I can pay for my guests on the last mission, so I can.
Okay.
New business?
No one has a new business, beautiful.
Well, I I just say new business, just for those that came in late in the meeting, with the police department, they're going to, the school's going to be paying for the SR role. So that's kind of it, it's just about.
I'll send you the link.
I, it's sad.
Disgusting.
We need to go through this sheet, see if we can form up any of the pricing, American Rescue Plan Act.
The other sheet that I gave you is, Cindy and I did get into the portal, our expenses for this past quarter, I guess. But the next reporting date is a year from now. So we're good for this year, the money's all there, it's ready to spend. It's all under loss of revenue, so we can pretty much use it for whatever we want. We don't have to delineate every single expense. But we'll report on everything that we have spent or committed next time. We will, not the one, the digitizing.
Phil, Rich and I talked the other day, and we think that three of us should do a building tour one of these days, of all the buildings. Talk, talk, talk about needs and obligations and.
I don't know, I wanted to get to this too, but seeing you mention that, we had the breakdown about changing the buildings to LED lights. And I know this, I wouldn't want to do anything here, because we don't know what we're going to do with this. But maybe we could tick off a couple of buildings, like the police department. That's not going anywhere, the Fight Department's all taken care of. Maybe we look at just contract lease for the police department? If it's going to be the same program, if we're going to get the same rebates, instead of doing it all at once, maybe doing stages?
Police may be a good one to do, because they use it 24 hours a day, so.
So do you want me to follow up with the company?
Affinity?
Yeah, Affinity, and see about breaking up the buildings, at least get going on the police station.
I think that's a good idea. One of our old buildings at this point.
Yeah, and we can talk about the other, next one would be the highway garage or something like that, but.
And the library, I'm pretty sure we did that.
The library's been done, Fight Department's been done, so rather, you know, just tick them off one time.
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
All right, I'll, I'll call him on that. Go into this Aquaphons, the town hall meeting upgrade video transmission. I would say you can save, what, 40,000 now? That would include audio and vid, video.
I'm trying to find the line.
It's the first yellow.
First yellow.
Now, this says on the sheet that, do you want us to approve the folding machine? That's what it looks like.
Well, yes, I mean, if you want to give them the go ahead to go to spend the money, we can do that anytime.
I think we'd already, we'd already told her to do it, I thought, so. Anybody have a problem with that?
How much is it?
Thirty-six eighty? Three thousand six hundred and eighty? I mean, I'm assuming it'd be used for a lot of other things.
We could have used it for the highway department a couple of weeks ago, when they sent all that.
To copy it.
We're going to put something in the tax bills about permits and all that stuff too, so.
So I move that we authorize the town clerk to expend $3,680 for a folding machine.
Second.
Got a motion of second, any other discussion? All those fair side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we need the store board of test kits? Is that all set, or what?
That, did it cut a price on that?
You got $2,000 on here.
Well, what that would allow is that we could do our tests ourselves instead of sending them out. And it scores us higher by saying. And it scores us higher by saying, when we take these samples, we found this immediately. You know, so it does score points on MS four. Whether it needs to be done right away, I don't know that it needs to be right away. So we could probably wait until we go through this.
We're voting, I'm looking at it, don't shoot the messenger.
I'm not voting yes and you do not wanna bring that up today.
All right.
Just tell them, just say it.
Can you say it, can you qualify, will you still love me, you know?
I will still love you even if you move to do that, but you might wanna do it when you have your more colleagues here.
Okay, we'll see, okay.
Can I ask a question while we're looking at these? We weren't sure what the difference, is the fiber optic infrastructure separate from the phone system?
I think the fiber optic infrastructure was us putting a fiber optic line going from the fire station to here and then he basically said if you really wanna do it, you'd have to loop the whole town back to the police station.
They did something here today, I don't know what they did today, but they ran something through the building today.
Yeah, but no, no, this is out in the telephone poles.
They were out there on the poles and brought it into the building.
No, that was probably, no, that was Consolidated probably bringing fiber optic in.
That's correct, and I was just gonna say, I got a notice in the mail today from Consolidated saying they're implementing fiber optic opportunities throughout the town and they have different pricing structure depending how fast you want service.
I think what, when I spoke to Cindy about it, she was thinking that Consolidated's already giving us the fiber optic, whatever it is. So we have that wrapped in, and we also have a backup for Affinity here.
Personally, I think we should, every town building should be going to Consolidated, I believe that's what Block Five is working on.
That fiber optic is this.
It's faster, it's.
Yeah, it's drier, yeah.
Four times faster, but this on, this fiber optic infrastructure is laying a line across the telephone poles. And I really don't, when he came in and explained it to us, it really isn't gonna give us what we need. So I, I think we should do something else.
Yeah, we should delete it, yes.
I talked to Rich about this, I don't know if this came up, but I think you're drawing a comment, but as we're dating this water line between the fire station and the town hall, it probably would make sense to at least put a conduit in there so that we could run fiber optic in there if we wanted to make our internal network.
So to say we would.
You, I mean, you could if you wanted to run a conduit, it's not gonna hurt and it'll tie those two buildings to the future.
Just, I would make sure we check with fiber optic company because they're pretty, some of them are pretty strict on like run it in and out and how far from the water line it has to be.
We gotta leave it on there for now.
Run electric lines to stand off up and work with the line.
Okay, all right.
So we are okay with that? The request for VFW to have an award ceremony during a BOS meeting?
Did everybody see that email?
If it came in this afternoon.
I should've been in there.
I didn't see it.
It's not in the packet.
It is in the packet because I saw it was. By the police officer in here.
It says correspondence on the top.
Oh, okay.
Oh, all right, yes, in here, sorry. I'm sorry, I read it. Somewhere.
I think they'll need briefing this for.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Me neither.
I don't see Health Officer of the Year though.
He's not working for the town anymore.
Okay.
I got it, I got it. All right, so yes on that?
You guys are tough.
Appointment to FSBC.
Fire Station Building Committee, it was one.
Yeah, it was Chuck.
Chuck, okay, that's done.
We missed Chuck, that's why.
Approval of minutes, April twenty-fifth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes? Public to non-public?
Second.
Second, discussion, all's fair, say aye.
Aye. If I'm station building committee, I probably need to appoint you for that as, as the spot.
You already are, so you just need to do your paperwork. Yeah, we had already assigned you as a liaison, so.
No, I know that, I need some paperwork for it.
No, that Graham needs to get that filled out, I guess.
Do we need to do?
Technically, technically all of us are supposed to be assigned to our.
As appointment, with an appointment form, swear and everything, because you're, I didn't realize that, so you're a holding member.
We're supposed to always do it.
Two years I've been on, we've never done that.
I've always done it for Planning Board.
Yeah, we decided that the chairman technically is the person who can serve all the work without, without.
Okay, then we need it all the way around.
We have three bids here. Bell and Funtland, Brock, Pike. These are for the paving contract for the year, or for later in the year.
Could you say where's paving issue?
No.
Well, I guess so, it's right here.
Hunt Road?
Hunt Road, Country Farm, Concan and West Shore Park.
I have the balance form, I don't even know what I'm looking at, it's.
Well, most of the time we take them and give them back to.
Yeah.
Rich to analyze and come back.
He'll pick them up after, when he gets back.
Okay, well, here's the balance line one. Again, I, I can't analyze it, so.
Well, I don't see a bottom line price at all.
The balance line?
Yeah.
Does Pike have it?
Pike, Pike has a bottom price of four hundred seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and fourteen fifty.
Sure.
This is Phil.
Yeah, and Brock says four eighty-seven and includes all the stuff. Balance line doesn't have. Oh, right here. Yeah, but they don't have a.
They don't have a price on it, they have a rate, but they don't have prices.
Yeah, so I make a motion to, um, give the bids to the, um, private road agent and have him evaluate the term of recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, my only comment will be that maybe Phil should be there to go through them with him so he can report back to us. Do you have a problem with that, do you, Phil, sometime?
I'll, I'll, I'll.
Are there any questions on the table that we, that we talked?
You need a vote?
Yeah, all's fair, say aye.
Aye.
All's, motion carries. Got anything else before we go back into non-public?
Who do we have non-public for?
Ellie has something and we got this thing from Cindy.
Okay.
Can I ask about the credit cards? I had to, the Zoom, it's been paid through my credit card. We do not have a credit card available to anyone downstairs.
Because no one signed up for it downstairs?
So I can do that if that makes sense to you, but I didn't know if there was another plan in mind.
The selectmen should have a credit card.
You wanna do one for the chairman and then they borrow that one?
Yes, with the chairman.
So you're gonna sign up for it, somebody's gotta go through it.
And just why we're on credit cards, Cindy said she's already had her first issue of payment because receipts were not turned in.
Need receipts every time.
So.
And then you direct that back to the department.
That's what I told her to do, so.
We should take a look because I'm getting reports like our propane bill was paid late. Should I just say how we're paying propane bill late?
I don't see how we pay anything late.
We have, well, we have one Comcast bill that the police station didn't send the bill over, so that was why it was late, so. We shouldn't pay anything late.
Why are they going, I guess, shouldn't it be common break?
Well, they gotta sign up on it, don't they?
So you had one personnel matter and.
Actually, we have two personnel matters.
They're both personnel.
The one we wanted to talk about. What you, can't remember obviously.
No, I can't, it's just personnel, I just wanna, what we're going in for, that's all.
And just one other thing, I asked Cindy today to give us a report payroll-wise, any time departments had overhead or overtime just so we know and can kinda keep up with it. And I told, I told her I didn't mean like one or two hours, but it was constantly, you know, whatever.
Oh, yeah, I like that.
Now you remember that. So a motion to go into non-public, somebody?
So moved.
Second.
Under personnel.
Motion is second. I want to thank everybody for watching tonight. Also, last week I forgot to thank everybody that attended the parade for Don Brooks. We had over two hundred cars and I think he was touched with it, some people came up and gave him personal messages and.
Nice.
It was very nice. Thank you.